Baker. Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Garrison. Counselor Janey and Company.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zakeham. Madam President, we have a floor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that the floor is present. At this time, if all guests, colleagues, and staff could please rise. Our lovely clerk is going to take us through the invocation today. I ask that everyone remain standing as she also leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Good afternoon. God of creation whom we try again and again to make into our own image. Enable us to desire rightly, to be of use in the service of others. Be with this Boston City Council. Grant them the wisdom to create what is essential for the common good. Keep within each of their hearts a love for the cause of human welfare and a dedication to enrich the lives of all people. Guide them in their labor to maintain and strengthen our public lives and remind them to be good stewards of the gift of life. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have a special presentation today. If I could ask Ann and Ashley and Vanessa to please come up.
Hi. Hello.
Hi. Good. Yes, thank you.
So we have a special presentation today, and Vanessa Torres, who is here, will lead us in that. But Ann Joseph and Ashley Brown, who are students at the Windsor School, received the second-place award from C-SPAN's National Documentary Competition called Student Cam. And we heard about this in my office from our former awesome colleague, Counselor Presley, and now Congresswoman Presley, who sent this information to us. And of course, we wanted to acknowledge them. So Vanessa, who works with C-SPAN in their marketing department as a marketing specialist, will tell us what this competition was about and why Ashley and Ann are so wonderful and why they won.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Awesome. Well, first off, thank you all so much for having us today. We're so excited to be here to celebrate Ann and Ashley on this incredible accomplishment. So a little bit about Student Cam. Student Cam's a nationwide documentary contest that C-SPAN holds every year. This year, it's actually 15 years of Student Cam, and we actually hit our 1,000,000th dollar in giving out to students nationwide. So we're really excited to honor these students. Ashley and Ann actually attend the Windsor School here in Boston, Massachusetts. And yeah, so we are so excited for them. We only give out a short amount of second-prize winners nationwide. And this year, we really saw how much students really put into this documentary contest. We received close to 6,000 participants nationwide and over, I mean, close to 3,000 entries nationwide. So out of all those students, we only pick 150 winners. And out of those 150, we got second prize here with Ann and Ashley. So it's a huge accomplishment for them, and we're so excited to acknowledge them. And with that, we're able to do, you know, education incentives like this, thanks to our partners from Comcast. So C-SPAN's actually funded by the cable industry as a public service. It allows us to maintain our nonpartisanship, give you that raw content of what's going on in Washington, D.C., so that you're able to watch Washington your way, which is pretty awesome. So I'd like to call up Ann and Ashley to talk a little bit about their video to you guys, since they are the producers and experts here on the wonderful video that they did. So come on up, ladies.
So we talked about freedom of the press in our video and how important it is and how essential it is to democracy and how it defines part of the American experience. And so we wanted to inspire people with our videos to really fight for that freedom and protect it.
Yeah, it was a really great learning experience. We contacted a lot of our local representatives, and we were able to interview some state representatives and even some congressmen. We were really surprised by the number of people that responded and were willing to take time out of their day to talk with us. And everyone was really helpful and kind. And thank you to C-SPAN.
Thank you, guys. I know they get a little starstruck. They're like, oh, my gosh, do I talk? What do I say? I'm like, it's okay. You guys are pros. You're pros. So on behalf of C-SPAN and Comcast, we're so proud of you guys. And we give you these certificates that are signed by co-CEO Susan Swain and our founder, Brian Lamb. So Ashley, congratulations on winning second prize for your video on America Marketplace and Ideas. And then Ann, congratulations as well. All righty. And then for our second prize winners and ups, we do these really awesome checks that they're able to keep in their rooms. Hopefully, you guys can share them. But so on behalf of C-SPAN, they won $1,500 for their prize in second for Student Cam. So congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, yes.
Thank you again, Vanessa, and congratulations again. And if all my colleagues could come up for a quick picture, I'd appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank.
Frank.
Hey, Lydia.
I was working.
Blue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again. And I also want to quickly acknowledge Ashley and Ann's parents as well. Oh, Vanessa. Vanessa.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Good stuff.
Who's the end there?
Thank you again. And I also want to quickly acknowledge Ashley and Ann's parents as well. Oh, Vanessa. Vanessa. Vanessa.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
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 Moving on to approval of the minutes.
If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Excuse me. Docket number 0663, message and ordinance amending the City of Boston Code Ordinances, Chapter 6, 7, 16, and 18. The purpose of these amendments is to facilitate the transfer of the Animal Care and Control Unit from the Inspection Services Department to the Parks and Recreation Department filed in the Office of the City Clerk on April 22, 2019.
Docket 0663 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0664, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $850,000 in the form of a grant, FY19, Boston Regional Intelligence Center allocation awarded by the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund upgrading, expanding, and integrating technology and protocols related to anti-terrorism, anti-crime, anti-gang, and emergency response.
Docket 0664 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 0665, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $250,000 in the form of a grant awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority, DBA, the Boston Planning and Development Agency pursuant to the 135 Marcy Boulevard Cooperation Agreement. The purpose of this grant is to facilitate design and capital improvements at the adjacent to the MBTA JFKU mass station.
Docket 0665 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 0666, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $250,000 in the form of a grant awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority, DBA, the Boston Planning and Development Agency pursuant to the 135 Marcy Boulevard Cooperation Agreement. The purpose of this grant is to facilitate design and capital improvements at the adjacent to the MBTA JFKU mass station.
Docket 0665 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 0666, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $262,763 in the form of a grant for the 2019 Senior Companion Program awarded by the Corporation for National and Community Service to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund part-time stipendary community service opportunities for low-income persons who are 60 years and older.
Docket 0666 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 0667, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $130,253 in the form of a grant for the Retirement Senior Volunteer Program, known as RSVP, awarded by the Corporation for National and Community Service, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund 356 RSVP volunteers who will provide social support to homebound and older adults and individuals with disabilities.
Docket 0667 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 0668, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $10,000 in the form of a grant for the K-9 Unit awarded by the Detective Joe Galant Memorial Foundation, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the replacement of ID harnesses and training collars for the Boston Police Department K-9s.
Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I, Madam President, I move to suspend and pass docket number 0668. Kathy Galant raises money every year for her husband, who passed away, a Boston police officer. So it's $10,000 that will go directly to the K-9 Unit, and it has to suspend and pass at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the great work of the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, my dear colleague from District 5, and he said his name there. And I wanted to speak on this because I know Kathy Galant is, will be watching this. She's come in the last several years to observe this. She is an amazing woman, amazing leader in West Roxbury. I did not know her husband, Joe, but I feel I've gotten to know him through her incredible advocacy, getting to know their wonderful children. And she's just a real leader in this city. And it is such an amazing testament to her late husband that lives are being saved because of the work that his legacy leaves all of us. So I wanted to thank you, Madam President, and the Chair, and look forward to seeing the great work of these funds being put to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. At this time, Counsel McCarthy, who's the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0668. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0668 has been passed. Moving on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if we could read docket 0669 through 0671. I'm sorry, through 0670.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Docket number 0669, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Emma Handy as the trustee of the Boston Common Maintenance Trust Fund for a term expiring January 10, 2020. Docket number 0670, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Emma Handy as the trustee of the Franklin Park Maintenance Trust Fund for a term expiring January 10, 2020.
Docket 0669 through 0670 will be placed on file.
Would you like me to read docket 0671 through 0673, Madam President?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 0671, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Sammy Nabulsi as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission for a term expiring January 3, 2022. Docket number 0672, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Stephanie Everett as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Unit for a term expiring January 3, 2022. And notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Vivian Lee as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission for a term expiring January 3, 2022.
Docket 0671 through 0673 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, if we could read docket 0674 through 0677?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0674, notice was received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the Mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of February 13, 2019. Docket number 0675, communication was received from the Boston Retirement Board regarding FY20 retiree cost-of-living adjustment, known as COLA vote. Docket number 0676, communication was received from Counsel O'Malley notifying that he and his colleagues will be touring the New England Aquarium on Tuesday, April 23, 2019, and will also be meeting with President of the New England Aquarium, Vicki Sprill. Docket number 0677, communication was received from Brian P. Golden of the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modifications to the Charlestown Urban Renewal Plan, project number MAS R55, with respect to the creation of possible C-2A-4.
Docket 0674 through 0677 will be placed on file. Moving on to reports of committees.
Docket number 0644, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on April 10, 2019, docket number 0644, in order for the adjustment of the local room occupancy excise rate under MAS General Laws, Chapter 64G, Section 3A, and acceptance of MAS General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 3D-A, and MAS General Laws, Chapter 64G and 3DB, allowing cities and towns to impose community impact fee on short-term rentals, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0644 is a local option, and it's to adjust the local room occupancy excise to 6.5% to impose a local community impact fee of 3% on short-term rental stays in professionally-managed units, and also imposes a community impact fee of 3% on short-term rental stays in owner-adjacent units. The local option legislation is authorized pursuant to Chapter 337 of the Acts of 2018. It's an act regulating and ensuring short-term rentals. This matter was sponsored by our mayor, Mayor Martin Walsh, referred to the Committee on Government Operations back on April 10. Committee held a hearing last Thursday. At this hearing, we learned that docket 0644 seeks to authorize the city to adopt three specific state options. The state law requires that each local option be accepted by three separate votes of the Boston City Council. Docket 0644 authorizes the city to accept the provisions of MAS General Law, Chapter 64G, 3A, to adjust local room occupancy excise to 6.5. This rate would apply to rooms in a bed-and-breakfast establishment, hotel, lodging house, short-term rental, or motel.
Oh, thank you.
The next one authorizes the city to accept provisions of MAS General Law, Chapter 64G, 3D-A, in order to impose a community impact 3% fee of the total amount of rent for each transfer of occupancy of a professionally-managed short-term rental unit. And the third is, for docket 064, authorizes the city to accept provisions of MAS General Law, Chapter 64G, 3DB, in order to impose a community impact fee of 3% of the total amount of rent for each transfer of occupancy of a short-term rental that is located within a two-family or three-family dwelling that includes the operator's primary residence. The committee heard public testimony, along with the testimony of Justin Staret, Budget Director, Leila Bernstein, Deputy Director of Supportive Housing, Marcy Ostberg, Director of Operations of DND. And at this time, based on all the information at the hearing and the committee report, as Chair, I'm recommending that docket 0644 ought to pass in three separate votes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. At this time, Counsel Flaherty, who's Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, recommends that we accept the committee report and pass docket 0644. Because it is a tax measure and an adoption measure, we have to take each section separately and do a roll-call vote for each one. So we will take them separately. So we'll start with Section 3A. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for Section 3A.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0644, Chapter 64G-3A. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Garrison.
No.
Counselor Garrison, no. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. And Counselor Zakeham.
Yes.
Counselor Zakeham, yes. Madam President, docket number 0644, Chapter 64G-3D-A, has received 12 votes in the affirmative and one vote in the negative, and therefore has passed.
Section 3, thank you, Madam Clerk. Section 3A has passed. Moving on to Section 3D, subsection A.
Docket number 0644, Chapter 64G-3D-A. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Garrison.
No.
Counselor Garrison, no. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. And Counselor Zakeham.
Yes.
Counselor Zakeham, yes. Madam President, docket number 0644, Chapter 64G-3D-A, has received 12 votes in the affirmative and one vote in the negative, and therefore has passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Section 3D, subsection A, has passed. Moving on to Section 3D, subsection B.
Docket number 0644, Chapter 64G-3DB. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Garrison.
No.
Counselor Garrison, no. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. And Counselor Zakeham.
Yes.
Counselor Zakeham, yes. Madam President, docket number 0644, Chapter 64G-3DB, has received 12 votes in the affirmative and one vote in the negative, and has passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Section 3D, subsection B, has passed.
And should we take, or the committee report vote? Do you think it's necessary?
We can take it for, yes.
Just so that this documentation...
So at this point, we'll take a vote on the entire docket, which also involves the acceptance of the committee report. For docket 0644, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0644 has been passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome. Madam President, would you like me to read docket 0174 and 447 together?
That would be great.
The Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on January 16, 2019, docket number 0174, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a grant from the Boston Planning and Development Agency in an amount not to exceed $1,502,050 for the cost related to the design and construction of the Harrison Ave Complete Street Corridor Project, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0447, Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on March 6, 2019, docket number 0447, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $200,000 in the form of a grant awarded by the MCAF Winthrop LLC pursuant to the 115 Winthrop Square Redevelopment Project Cooperation Agreement. The purpose of this grant is to fund a bus rapid transit plan as described in the project's transportation access plan agreement, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Madam President, we had a hearing on both of these grants together a few weeks ago, and I was glad to have the district counselors present for each of these pieces. The first is a little over $1.5 million that has come from different development projects along the Harrison Ave corridor between Herald Street and East Berkeley in the South End, an area that has seen a lot of transformation in the last few years from ink block to 345 Harrison and these new projects. If you're familiar with the street, there's a large median down the center and a one-way bus lane and part of it. And so this funding would go to actually redesigning that, making sure there's safer crossings for pedestrians, access for bicycles, a protected lane, cycle track, et cetera. The second, and I'll defer to the district counselor if he wants to chime in on that one. The second grant, it comes from the Winthrop Square Garage Project and would all go to hiring a consultant to do this study. The idea is that it would be complete potentially by the end of the year and then lead to further conversations about how to fund that, those changes after that. But again, defer to the district counselors and recommend passage today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counsel Wu for conducting the hearing and providing great feedback and input today. Madam President, Counsel Wu said it best, this money that 0174 would be used for this critical area in the South End, especially on issues of improving pedestrian safety, making our streets, crosswalks, sidewalks more accessible for our elderly and for the disabled as well. So pedestrian safety is a critical part of this plan. And I also recommend, as Counsel Wu mentioned, I also recommend passage as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam, through the chair, to the chair. Docket 0447, do we have, do we have an idea as to where the bus rapid transit plan is? And did they provide a map? And if so, through the chair, if I could get a copy of that.
Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have maps for the first grant, but not the second. My understanding is that it's really just about hiring the consultant, and the consultant will then generate everything after that, that there's not kind of a specific area or plan that they're filling in. But there will be more public process to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu, and thank you, Counsel Flaherty. At this time, Counsel Wu, who's Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0174 and 0447. Transportation, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0174 and 0447. We will take them separately. For docket 0174, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0174 has been passed. All those in favor of passage of docket 0447, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0447 has been passed. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Madam President, would you like me to read dockets 0104 through 0503?
That would be great. Thank you.
Docket 0104, message an order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant for $498,291 for the First Responders Comprehensive Edition and Recovery Act Cooperative Agreement, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, to be administered by the Fire, Safety, Health, and Wellness. The grant will fund the Boston Fire Department's Recovery Services Program. This is a collaborative, I am so sorry, today? This is a collaborative effort between the Boston Fire Department and First Responders, the Mayor's Office of Recovery Services, the Boston Public Health Commission, and community-based organizations to improve the city's response to opioid overdoses. Docket number 0108, message an order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $2,250,000 in the form of a grant for the FY19 Boston Fire Department's Day Training Grant, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the Boston Fire Department's Training Division for FY19. The state earmark supplements, city funds for training, supplies, and materials for the Boston Fire Training Division and Academy. Docket number 0112, message an order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for the FFY 2019 Traffic Enforcement Program, awarded by the United States Department of Transportation, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund high-visibility traffic enforcement of motor vehicles laws, including but not limited to speeding and aggressive driving, impaired driving, and occupant protection. Docket number 0216, message an order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $1,559,1418 in the form of a grant for the 2019 Senator Charles R. Shannon, Jr. Community Safety Initiative, awarded by the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund regional and multi-disciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through coordination, coordinated prevention intervention, law enforcement, prosecution, and reintegrating program. Docket number 0218, message an order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $305,362 in the form of a grant from the FY18 Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, to be awarded by the Police Department. The grant will fund a partnership with the Boston Public Health Commission to conduct home visits to opioid overdose survivors, linking them to appropriate services and resources. Docket number 0219, message an order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $257,492 in the form of a grant for the FY 2018 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Program, awarded by the National Institute of Justice, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund two criminalist positions, overtime, lab supplies, and continuing education expenses. Docket number 0503, message an order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $280,000 in the form of a grant for the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative. Amendment FY18 and FY19, awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund a comprehensive inter-agency strategy that connects law enforcement, employment, education, public health, and youth development agencies to reduce youth violence in the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I rise to seek passage of these documents. Quickly, Boston Fire Department, and we have a hearing on Monday. Boston Fire Department and Boston Police attended. Maria Chivas, the Director of Research and Development from BPD was here, as well as Damon Bills and Frank DeLuca. Kevin Kosarek from the BPD Crime Lab, and Connie Wong from Labor Relations and Human Resources from the Fire Department. Docket number 0104 is a collaborative effort between the Boston Fire Department and the First Responders and Recovery Services to be used by the Boston Health Commission. It's a community-based organization to improve our city responses to the opiate crisis and overdoses on the streets. Docket number 0108 is a grant that will fund Boston Fire Training Division and Academy activities. This is a state earmark. Docket number 0112, this grant will fund high-visibility traffic enforcement of motor vehicle laws, including but not limited to speeding and aggressive driving, impaired and ocular protection. I did ask in texting, is involved in that one as well. My pet peeve, I'll throw that in. Docket number 0216, the grant would fund a regional and multi-disciplinary approach to combat gang violence, prevention and intervention. Docket number 0218, grant will fund a partnership with the Boston Public Health Commission to conduct home visits. I want to thank Ron Cobb from Central Staff for pulling up an article. Quincy is now doing this at a very successful rate, so I want to thank Ron for putting that on my desk and hope for passage of docket 0218. Docket number 0219, this grant will fund two criminalist positions, overtime and lab supplies and continuing education expenses. And finally, docket number 0503, this grant will fund a Safe and Successful Youth Initiative. They work with faith-based organizations as well as all of the community-based organizations and nonprofits through the city. So at this time, I rise to ask for suspension and passage of these documents.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, who's Chair of the... Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, and I intend to ultimately vote for this, but I do want to make sure that when we're talking about regional funding and coordination, that we are still continuing the conversation about how that regional coordination, especially when it comes to gang violence investigation, is not usurping the goals and the mission of the Trust Act. We had a really good conversation about that recently with the Commissioner. Again, I intend to vote for this funding because the laudable goals of making sure that we are coordinating against gang violence is something I completely support. But again, I don't want to lose track of us making sure that the very ordinance that we passed here in terms of the Trust Act is not usurped, and then that we are using dollars to help also usurp that. So just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Anyone else looking to speak on these dockets? Thank you. At this time, Counsel McCarthy, who's the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of these dockets. I will take them each separately. For docket 0104, all in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0104 has been passed. For docket 0108, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0108 has been passed. For docket 0112, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0112 has been passed. For docket 0216, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0216 has been passed. For docket 0218, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0218 has been passed. For docket 0219, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0219 has been passed. For docket 0503, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0503 has been passed.
Docket number 0622 through docket 0625 will... Orders for the FY 20 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations, annual appropriations for the school department, appropriations for other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, appropriations for certain transportation and public realm improvements, and appropriation for certain PAC improvements. And docket number 0626 through 0628, capital budget appropriations, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements.
Dockets 0622 through 0625 and dockets 0626 through 0628 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0631, message an order authorizing the Law Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to purchase goods and services for repairs to city property. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from recoveries for damages to the city property caused by third parties. The Law Department will be the only unit authorized to expend from this fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $500,000.
Docket 0631, remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0632, message an order authorizing the city authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Tourism and Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to purchase goods and services to support events and programming on and around City Hall Plaza. To advance tourism and promote participation in public celebrations, civic and cultural events, this revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from payments for the use of City Hall Plaza pursuant to the city of Boston's Boston Code Ordinance and Chapter 11-7.14. The Mayor's Office of Tourism will be the only unit authorized to expend from this fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000.
Docket...
Sorry.
Oh, Madam Clerk, actually. Just a minute. Madam Clerk? One. Docket 0632 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means, and Madam Clerk, if we could, I'm sorry, will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, if we could read dockets 0633 through 0640 together. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0633, message an order authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to purchase goods and services to support the operation of the Strand Theater. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from rental fees for the use of the Strand Theater. The Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0634, message an order authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to purchase goods and services to support public art to enhance the public realm throughout the city of Boston. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from easements within the public way granted by the Public Works Improvement Commission. The Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0638, message an order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to repair and purchase Boston Public Schools' computer technology, including computers, mobile devices, and instructional software. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from equipment sales and repair fees for Boston Public Schools' technology. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $1 million. Docket number 0639, message an order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to support the maintenance and repair for BPS facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs. Receipts from lease permit for use and parking fees for BPS facilities will be deposited in the fund. BPS will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall not exceed $2,600,000. And docket 0640, message an order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 for Boston Public Schools' transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs. The revolving fund shall be credited with revenue received from Boston Public School Department for the provision of transportation to groups and entities for field trips and activities other than transportation to and from school. Receipt and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $400,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0633 through 0640 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0678, Counsel Zachem and Flaherty offer the following order for hearing regarding healthcare provider parking permits in the city of Boston.
Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask that we suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel McCarthy as an original cosponsor.
Any objection? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel McCarthy as a third cosponsor. Thank you, Counsel Zachem.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be very brief. This is a refile for an ongoing discussion that Counsel Flaherty and I have been having with the Transportation Department, with the Disability Commission, with others, to address some of the issues that home health providers face when they're serving residents in our neighborhood. Boston, as we should be, has made a goal to be more age-friendly, more welcoming to people at all stages of life and of all levels of ability, and we need to make sure that when people do need assistance in their home, that their aides are not being ticketed or towed. Particularly, we've found many instances where the patient or the individual who's receiving care is forced to go into their own pocket to pay for these tickets to ensure that this vital health care is being delivered. I understand we have our good colleague, Counsel Wu, who will be introducing a parking-related matter later today, does have some provisions in there regarding this issue, and it's certainly something that I look forward to. Perhaps we can fold the conversations together, but this is something that's been a longstanding issue that needs to be addressed for people in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank the previous speaker, as well as Counsel McCarthy, for their work on this, and also recognize the efforts of SEIU 1199 with respect to the work that they've done advocating on behalf of their health care attendants. This is something, as mentioned, has been discussed. I know that I've heard from people all across the city, particularly those that have loved ones that need the sort of personal and professional health care, as well as those that have the need for hospice, and to come out and to have ticket after ticket, night after night, or worse, the car get towed. I think we can do better than that as a city. What is happening, and we've already seen this happen in our local community health centers, which is our great physicians and their staff, they're choosing not to renew with our community health centers because they've been ticketed into submission. And the technology is there for it, for us to be able to identify some type of placard program, if you will, where we can continue to get good, quality healthcare opportunities for our residents and for families. Otherwise, what's going to happen is those great healthcare professionals, they're doing it now. They're just going to choose other locations. They're going to choose other municipalities to conduct, you know, their professional trade and craft. And what we'll be left with is the inexperienced, the buttes. We'll get the buttes, because they're going to be the only ones that are going to be able to come in here to get the work. The talent is going to go to other locations. And so I think that this is a no-brainer from a number of different perspectives. I know that, you know, whether it's the, you got the pass lane that Mastod has for our tolls, you have the way that we currently do our system where the vehicles go up and down, and they have that, they have to take the pictures of the plates. I mean, the technology is there to allow for a placard program for healthcare professionals. The time has come for it to happen, and it's something that we could technically actually charge for, which would make sense. I'd rather charge the out-of-towner than the person that's already sort of paying the freight here with taxes and excise taxes and things of that nature. So if there's a way to have this program up and running, I think that our healthcare providers are going to continue to come here and provide great, excellent care for our residents. Thank you, Madam President. Look forward to an expedited hearing.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
I want to thank my colleagues from South Boston and Back Bay regarding this very important issue. I felt that the working sessions last year, we were getting very, very close to solution, and I think the solution is right around the corner. And just to, you know, reiterate what was earlier said, when you have a loved one that needs hospice care or daily maintenance care, or whatever that situation may be, to have a person who is working, I think we've all seen them, how hard the caregivers work, to have them come walking outside for a $45, $65, $95 ticket. And as my colleague from South Boston alluded to, it's not worth coming into Boston to do that, and that's really troublesome. So as I said, we're close to a solution. I'm very happy to that and thankful that I was put on, and I'm looking forward to an expedited hearing.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to offer my support and encourage this hearing to happen soon. I know that's work that's been ongoing. I also ask that we look to add and have a conversation about itinerant workers, especially in the Boston Public Schools, that are visiting schools across our city throughout our day, and because they're going in and out of schools, they're often not able to find parking on our streets. our streets. And sometimes they're very often carrying heavy equipment to and from schools. I also ask that we consider early intervention providers, those that visit our homes to offer physical therapy and occupational therapy and speech pathology, speech therapy to our youngest residents, and also consider the role that the visiting nurses may play for new moms or post-surgical visits when so often our medical system is pushing patients home sooner. So making sure that they have access to care is also considered. I know it adds some complexity to the issue, but we need to make sure that those services are also able to be received in our schools and in our homes across the city. Thank you.
Would you like to add your name, Counselor?
I'd like to add my name, please.
Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Janey, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, as well as the chair, I love this, as well as the chair. Docket 0678 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans and Military Affairs.
Docket number 0679, Counselor Edwards offered the following resolution affirming the right of graduate student workers to organize for fear working conditions.
Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I rise today in full solidarity and with full support of my union brothers and sisters of the United Auto Workers. I am a member of that union through my work at legal services. So part of that organizing effort of that union is to make sure that all workers are seen and valued, especially workers who are students also at our colleges and universities. The fact of the matter is, there are students who work tirelessly, teaching courses, working on patents, working extremely hard in laboratories. And what they're facing are a lot of the discriminatory issues, a lot of the pay equity issues, and a lot of the issues that face workers every single day. But because they're part of an institution, because some of their work involves research, they're being denied the status of a worker. And it's not just the status of the worker that they're being denied. We have graduate students, many of whom are becoming parents, who are married, who are working extremely hard and wondering if she can balance both keeping her job as a researcher/ lab tech, but also because she's pregnant, she's concerned about telling her research guide or her professor that her pregnancy could be the reason why she no longer gets to continue her research. She has no protections. She has no reasonable accommodations. There are people who are teaching regularly, the undergrad students, grad students who come in there and teach for the professors. Many of them are waiting weeks, if not the entire semester, for their paycheck because the professor simply forgets to sign it. There's no prioritization for them. But their rents are due on the first. They have a lot of bills to pay, daycare, so on and so forth. They're dealing with the pressures and burdens of being a worker but not getting any of the protections or benefits. These students are working on patents worth billions of dollars for these institutions to make money off of and still can't get paid minimum wage sometimes. So what I'm asking for is that we stand in solidarity with those workers, and that's what they are. They are hard workers who happen to also be part of research institutions. These same institutions have recognized the right of other workers to organize, be it in their security, be it in their cafeterias. And when they didn't, we organized in student solidarity with Local 26 to make sure that those working in the cafes were also granted worker status and protections. Today, we have a bad actor, unfortunately, at Boston College. They have not only not recognized the recent graduate student union, as in the students have organized a union and voted for that, but they refuse to negotiate with them. Worse still, when the students began to organize, they faced academic probation and were punished for organizing as a student union. That is against, not only, I think, the character of the institution, but against the Catholic faith that they are so proud to promote as a Jesuit institution. So I'm standing here today to ask for your support of this resolution, to stand with all workers, to make sure that when they organize, that they are given the megaphone that they deserve and given the rights that they deserve as well as workers. This is going to be part of several conversations that we hope to kick off about graduate students and the worker status, and making sure that an institution, especially one operating in Boston, with the city of Boston, is respectful of the right for unions to form, unions not only of workers and security, but unions of their students as well. So I stand here again proudly with the graduate students and the union at B.C. and in total opposition and actual shame and anger with the institution for punishing students for standing up and exercising their rights as union members.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? And actually, for a point of clarification, Counselor Edwards, you want to seek suspension of the rules and adoption today? Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Janey, I love this, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zakeham, as well as the chair. Counselor Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0679. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0679 has been adopted.
Docket number 0680, Counselors Wu and Janey offer the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding the latest quarterly report as provided by the ordinance promoting equity in the city of Boston contracts.
Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This follows on the great work of the council several years ago now, when this body passed the supplier diversity and equity in procurement and contracting ordinance. That ordinance not only set up more proactive requirements for the city to be thinking about businesses owned by people of color and by women and by local Boston residents, but also created reporting requirements of a quarterly report that would detail exactly what percentage of city dollars were going to each of those categories. Again, we passed that in December of 2017, and since then have only gotten one quarterly report from November 2018. It was incredibly eye-opening and informative. We learned through that report that of all the city spends, everything from the paper that we buy in municipal buildings to contracts to get our parks grass-cut and cleaned up, of all of those dollars, currently 0.72% goes to businesses owned by people of color, 0.74% goes to certified women-owned business enterprises, and 1.31% goes to the local businesses. So we have a lot more room to go. I want to thank my partner in this, Counselor Janey, and Counselor Flaherty, who has helped us schedule a hearing for May 2 on this issue. This request is just to make sure that we get the most updated numbers in the latest report before that hearing. We had sent over a request by email but had not heard back, so wanted to just put that out there formally as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. And I want to thank my good friend and colleague, Counselor Wu, for her partnership in addressing the important issue of diversity in the city's contracting and procurement. As she's already stated, as you guys already know, at the end of 2017, you passed a very important ordinance that was right before I joined this body. And we need to make sure that we are getting the information so that we can continue to monitor. Section 4 of that ordinance that you passed requires that the Office of Small Business Development prepare and publicly release quarterly reports so that we understand the numbers when it comes to minority-owned, women-owned, and veteran-owned and resident-owned small businesses. According to the ordinance, the reports will be published quarterly and submitted to the mayor's office, as well as this body, the Boston City Council. No such report has been published online. We did get the November 2018 report, as my colleague has already indicated. Those numbers were shocking. She mentioned those numbers, but I'm going to do it again because I think we really need to sit with this. Only 103, 103 out of 14,307 city contracts were with minority-owned businesses, representing $4.3 million out of $664 million. So that's $4 million out of $664 million. Again, that was 0.72% of contracts and 0.65% of dollars spent. That was for people of color, businesses of color. Only 106 out of the same 14,307 were with women-owned businesses, representing $4.9 million. That was 0.74% of contracts and 0.75% of businesses. Only 187, again, out of the 14,307, were with Boston residents. These are businesses, local businesses to Boston. And that was $2.3 million, representing only 1.31% of contracts and 0.36% of dollars spent. Only 0.36% of the money that this city spends went to local businesses. We can do better, people. And only one contract was with veteran-owned businesses, and that was for $4,500. These numbers show the need for accountability and reporting, as the council has recognized and required in the ordinance. And so I'm happy to join my colleague in filing this 17F to make sure that we get the information that we need, the missing reports, and more details as we move forward with the May 2 hearing. I look forward to working with the city, with the mayor's office, with Chief Barrows as we move forward, certainly my colleague, Counselor Wu, and all of you, to make sure that we are increasing those numbers and doing a much better job with the $664 million that we spend every day, making sure that that goes to local businesses, people of color, and women-owned businesses. Thank you so much. Thank you for your partnership.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. And I'm assuming, but want to clarify, you guys would like to suspend the rules today and pass this order. Okay, thank you. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name to the order? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Garrison, I apologize, Counselor O'Malley, as well as the chair, and Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo, would you like to add your name before you go back? Thank you. And Madam Clerk, if you could also add Counselor Siomo. At this time, Counselors Wu and Counselor Janey seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0680. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0680 has been passed. Moving on to 0681.
Docket number 0681, Counselor Wu offer the following, an ordinance regarding resident parking in the city of Boston.
Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You all might have heard a little bit about this already. I certainly have. I am at the point now where, for several years, we've had conversations about resident parking in Boston, had a public hearing and more meetings and more conversations with residents from various neighborhoods. And the long and short of it is that our resident parking system isn't working for a lot of residents. It is incredibly tough to have a discussion with residents to charge for something that people are currently getting for free. But the charge that we are already paying is that people circling, looking for a spot when they get home from work, in some neighborhoods, an hour or more, if you get home a minute after 4:45 or 5:00 p.m., that is leading to a lot more traffic and congestion, that is leading to pollution and our air quality, creating more asthma in our youth and people who live in these congested areas. Interestingly, just today or yesterday, Mass Inc. came out with a poll on people's opinions when it comes to traffic and congestion. How are residents being affected by the experience of living in such a congested city? So residents that have commutes of 45 minutes or more, over half of them have recently considered changing jobs, 30% of them have considered leaving the area altogether. Two-thirds of people surveyed said they have to schedule their lives around what would be ideal for them. They have to choose a different schedule than what would be ideal to avoid the worst parts of traffic. It is so bad. Nearly two-thirds report that they are stressed, angry, frustrated, and I think we've all experienced that trying to get around the city, too. So what's the connection between resident parking and traffic? Some studies have suggested that 30% of cars circling a congested downtown area are looking for parking. So when we make it difficult for people to find spots, when we keep it artificially low-cost, there's no thinking about what you'll do with your car. Of course, you'll get the resident parking spot. Of course, you'll just try to find a spot, even if that means you have to circle the block a couple times or a long time. Cities that have moved to, from having a free system to even having a very modest charge, have seen people think about their car usage and their parking decisions differently. Again, $25 a year is a lot to ask for residents who are living in an increasingly expensive city. The ordinance does make efforts to try to mitigate some of that for our most vulnerable residents. It includes exemptions for seniors and for low-income residents. It includes exemptions for home health care aides, as we heard about earlier, and Boston Public School staff, who would be visiting patients or students. But whatever the shape of it, whether it's $25 for the first car, $50 for the second, $75 for the third, as we proposed here, or no charge for the first, $25 for the second, or a limit, we need to have a conversation, not just about commercial parking, as the administration has been doing really well and with great success. We have to have a conversation about our neighborhoods, too, because quality of life is being impacted. People are feeling it, and we don't have to be trapped in this situation where some neighborhoods, you just have to deal with it, and you're just going to have to circle and cause traffic and cause pollution. These are policy decisions that people are making, and we need to have that conversation. As tough as it is, we need to step up because the traffic is getting worse day by day by day. And it's going to be a combination of things like this, along with congestion pricing, to try to ease traffic coming in from outside the city, along with conversations about the gas tax, along with conversations about transportation climate initiative. It all has to be on the table, talking about Uber and Lyft as well, and the contribution that they're making to traffic, and not pitching in when it comes to funding public transportation. It all has to be on the table, and unless the city of Boston is doing our part by taking every step that we can take, we are not truly serving our residents well. So I welcome your feedback. I know it's difficult to talk about things like this, but this is open for debate and discussion. I just felt like after three, four years now of talking with the administration and talking with colleagues, it is time to put an official proposal on the table, and then we can have a debate and discussion from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to speak in opposition to this audience, docket 0681. With residents of the city already paying so much of their hard-earned money for rent or for mortgage, paying for property taxes and high excise taxes, this ordinance placed an unnecessary financial burden on our driving residents, and it is inappropriate. This is a slippery slope, as what would start now $25 or $50 for a parking permit, I am sure would turn to $100, $250 in three or five years. I was at a community meeting in East Boston last week, and I heard from concerned residents who have parking permits but still cannot park on their streets because other drivers come in from outer city and park in their parking spaces. Resident parking only spots, and they never get ticketed or towed. People without stickers therefore have to have no incentives not to park there. How about we first partner with the Boston Police Department to fix the problem in the city before charging a resident these fees, when they cannot find a resident spot to park even with a free permit? Finally, as it regards transportation, we cannot have it both ways. We cannot say that you shouldn't pay to rock the tea and then turn around and charge citizens for parking permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Garrison. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I rise to offer my support to my colleague, Counselor Wu, for putting this on the table. I think it's a very important conversation, and it's a conversation we have to be willing to have. I think it's very courageous of you. Obviously, people who have been getting things for free don't want to start paying for them. I understand that. $25 may be a hardship for some, and I am glad to see the exemptions in this ordinance that would exempt low-income residents, our seniors, certainly the visiting nurses, et cetera. But we've got to be willing to have this conversation. My first year and a half on this body, it's not even a year and a half, it's about 16 months, I guess, on May 1. One of the top issues, obviously, housing, very important, education, very important, but everywhere you go, you hear about parking, you hear about traffic, you hear about congestion. Right now, there are many neighborhoods who want to see more residential parking permits, whether they are free or whether or not they have to pay, but that's a double-edged sword that people have to realize. It has a ripple effect. This is an opportunity to collect some revenue for our city. Clearly, we have to do this. If we are going to do this, we need to do it in a smart way. And again, I think you've put forward a smart proposal that will at least get the ball rolling and allow us to have this important conversation. We can't shy away from having a conversation because it may be unpopular, because people have been getting this for free. We do... We do need the revenue. We just kicked off a budget season this week. We certainly know that the receipts that come into the city is a very small piece of that pie. This would certainly increase that. But if we are going to do this, I certainly support a graduated system. It may be that we exempt the first vehicle. It may be that we offer something small, like $25. Mind you, this is over the course of a year. So, $25 costs way more to fill your tank and do everything else it does with your car. I don't think it's unreasonable for us to have this conversation. In fact, I think it's very important for us to have this conversation, not just from a revenue standpoint, but as one to really help us think about how to keep traffic moving, how to free up some parking in our city, which is becoming overrun by vehicles in our city. So, we have to look at all of the tools yet again to ensure that we are, that we are really putting forth something that will help improve the quality of life for the residents in this great city. I certainly commend my colleague for raising the concerns, but I think that's the point of the conversation, is so that we can all discuss and put out what we think is good about, perhaps, charging for resident parking, but also, what are some of the pitfalls, and how do we avoid those pitfalls? Right now, it already includes the exemptions for low-income and seniors, which is very important to me. A constituent of mine I spoke with this morning was concerned about that, and I followed up right away to let her know that there is an exemption for low-income. So, I look forward to having this conversation, and I thank you again for putting it on the table. And that's it. Thank you.
Council Janey, would you like to add your name?
Oh, yes, and please add my name.
Thank you, Council Janey. Madam Clerk, if you could add, Council Janey. Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and I want to commend the maker for your leadership. And yes, I want to acknowledge that it is a brave move that you are taking, and I do think that that's at least worth noting, because it is not an easy thing to at least propose this conversation. But I think the conversation's actually bigger than the fees that we're going to charge. The question really is about parking reform in Boston. That's what we need. And while there are people who oppose this particular tool in the toolbox, ultimately, we can go back and forth on all the different kind of exemptions, the fees, the step-up, whether the first, all those different combinations of ways to get there. What is not, what is not going to be on the table, and what can no longer stay, is maintaining the status quo. We have to change. The question is how we're going to change together, so that we do not hurt those who are particularly concerned about their pocketbooks, and that we don't burden people who have literally just lived here and are trying to just come home. There are people who I think that this ordinance invites to the table. I would invite more people to this conversation with some suggestions. One, I want to make sure that we are not, before we're talking about Boston residents paying for parking, that we really talk, go back to the communities, and have the communities come up with corridors where there could be metered parking for folks who don't live in Boston necessarily, or coming in, possibly parking by our T stations, and because they have two hours of free parking, getting on the T and coming back to that T station that's on the border of Boston, and then going on about their business. So, we want to make sure that there's a true conversation about how, if we're going to, if the goal is to generate revenue for enforcement, that we generate revenue and the burden is shared for all people, not just residents of Boston, but folks who come in and just park for free in our neighborhoods with a two-hour parking, and then contribute nothing while I'm supposed to, or I may pay $25 for my one car. I want to make sure that also, folks who are invited to the table are employers. You know, there's incentives that they can give to their employees, helping them, or paying them, or subsidizing T passes. That's something that we should have companies also doing, and I hope the City of Boston considers doing that as well, not just from our direct pay, but making sure that they are incentivizing their employees to take public transportation by either offering them discounted T rates. I think what's key, and what I do really am, and I'm very excited about this ordinance, is having the parking census actually incorporated into that conversation, because it's, it's really hard to come up with a policy about a finite amount of parking spaces if we actually don't know what that number is and where they are. I think also, what's really great about this is the visitor parking pass, which is something I think in general we need to have a serious conversation about. I also wanted to make sure that part of this parking reform conversation involves where we would have pickup and drop-off sites for Uber and Lyft. I think one of the most frustrating things is watching them circle around the neighborhoods waiting for their next call, when in some places, we can actually just say, Uber and Lyft will pick up over here, and that's where you will pick up, and people can walk to them. I think what it comes down to it is also looking at making sure that when we have this conversation, the exemptions are truly for our most vulnerable and include all of those individuals. One population in particular that I would love to see added to this are those who are in our homeless shelters. We actually had a case with a woman who was assigned through the state to Crossroads in East Boston. The only thing she had left was her car. That was the only way that she could make enough money to hopefully get out of the shelter, and the City of Boston put a boot on it, because she didn't have a resident sticker, and therefore, she couldn't afford the tickets to pay there. So, I want to make sure that when we're talking parking reform, and that's really what I'm hoping this conversation becomes, yes, we need to talk about fees, but we really actually need to change how things work. We have a Parking Task Force kicked off in East Boston, where we're literally planning where angle parking would go, where new meters would go. That's, I think, the conversation. And I also think I want to, I want to be clear about the vision for this as well. Is the goal to generate revenue, or is the goal to reduce, excuse me, reduce the amount of cars on the street? I don't know that $25 is going to do that. I don't know that $50 is going to do that. But without that kind of clear vision and goal, I think that this conversation will be harder to have. Before, when I, before I conclude, I also wanted to thank Commissioner Gina Fandaka for her incredible work. She actually came out in the middle of the week to meet with the Parking Task Force in East Boston, and just in general, I mean, we are, I'm going to deeply miss her and her service and her leadership when it comes to parking and BTD. She has been incredible, not only to her community of East Boston, but to all of Boston, and she will be sorely missed. Dallas is definitely getting a great, great person, great Bostonian, and a great commissioner. So, I wanted to note that as well. Thank you.
Would you like to add your name?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, if you could add, Council Edwards. Council Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say that I think that this ordinance here, although we do have to talk about the resident stickers in our city, the amount of resident stickers that are out and about in our neighborhoods, we've missed, I think, the conversation that Council Edwards has just alluded to, that thinking about parking, thinking about transportation in a much more strategic way in our city. On the face of this, this order appears to be punishing to some of our outlying neighborhoods that don't have access to transportation to get into our cities so easily. It seems to be difficult for many of our families who need transportation to get their kids either to and from school, or to and from the hockey rink, or to and from the ball field, or to and from after-school or weekend activities. We have mechanisms in place right now where we are currently taxing through excise tax, certainly through parking tickets, the current residents in the City of Boston. What we have missed in some of these conversations are those that are from outside of the City of Boston, outside of the Commonwealth of Boston, who are abusing and using our streets without giving any resources, without paying in, paying in with insurance tax, without paying in on excise tax. A lot of our rideshare companies come from out of state, never mind out of city, using our roads, circling our streets, creating a great deal of congestion on our streets. We need to make sure that we're enforcing the rules that we have on our books right now, looking at them in a strategic way, if they do need to be, need to be changed. I'm really excited to learn more about the Parking Task Force in East Boston, and how we could maybe duplicate that and expand that throughout the City of Boston, and making sure that transportation is available for all Bostonians in a meaningful way, before we start to punish those that have cars. Now, is there room for charging for those parking passes, so that we have a better idea of who has what and where in the City of Boston? Should we do that inventory of parking spaces that have been asked for from this body for longer than I've sat on this council? Yes, those are all important things to do. This is certainly an important conversation to have, but it is one that we need to make sure that we are thoughtful, like Council Edwards said, about including lots of different parties at the table. Resident parking in our neighborhoods right now, as it stands, is helpful in many spots, especially those that are close to T spots, but it's been hurtful for many of our small businesses. We are unable to enforce two-hour parking in many of our neighborhood business districts. We can't enforce 15-minute parking in, in, I think, none of our places across the City of Boston. And that's important, to think about our residents, to think about those that need access to vehicles, to think about our small businesses, who the cost of living has gotten higher in the City of Boston, so hasn't the cost of doing business in the City of Boston. So, how do we think about all of those interests when we talk about something like this? I think it's an important piece of the larger conversation. I wish that we were having the larger conversation, and I would encourage the larger conversation as we go forward with this ordinance. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do wish to have my name added, because I would like to be a part of this conversation. I think it's important for all of us to, for all of us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Asabi George. Madam Clerk, if you could add, Council Asabi George. Council McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I rise, this is, I don't have a lot of resident parking in District 5, to be very honest with you, but everybody who has a resident parking sticker has already called me, I believe, and they're not, they're not thrilled. Sorry, Michelle. They're not thrilled at all. I think government in general, I do agree with my colleague from Dorchester, this hurts middle-class families. Growing up here, I needed a car. I needed to get to Little League, I needed to get to football practice, the buses don't go by, all of the fields and all the rinks and all the hoop courts that my kids played on. I needed a car. And the 25 bucks, you know, I could swing it, I'm lucky enough to swing it, but other people aren't lucky enough to swing it. But government in general, we miss the ball. We dropped the ball, we swung and missed, however you want, whatever cliche you want, we missed it. We had Uber here. Uber and Lyft were up at the State House. They bragged about how 50,000 vehicles would be driving around the city. Everybody will have a vehicle to jump into at any given time, and that we charge like a buck, or 10 cents, or 20 cents, whatever. If you want to surge and surcharge people, surcharge the people who are taking Lyft and Uber everywhere. Surcharge the people who are going from City Hall to the Bostonia across the street in an Uber, because it's raining out. Surcharge them during the days, Monday through Friday, because those are the people who are coming in from Westwood and Framingham and Needham and everywhere else. Those aren't the people who live in the City of Boston. So, I'd like to rip open the Band-Aid on Uber and Lyft already and get them to pay. And I, and I mean, I think we should go over the top of them. If you have 50,000 cars driving around the City of Boston, and you whack them for surges of $5 during 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., I can't do the math fast enough. Matt, get on that. I can't do the math fast enough. But I'm just telling you, you could, you could raise a ton of money and capital for Boston, for the T, for the state, without putting it on the backs of the middle-class people who, who need cars, and our residents who, I mean, I have a 2001 vehicle, and I'm getting excised, I think my excise tax is $97. Come on, will ya? $97. If I moved to Dedham, I'd be paying about $8 on that. It's, it's ridiculous. And the fact that out in front, if you get two cars that smash into each other, one car from Winthrop and one car from Canton, who gets the, who gets the penalty in the insurance? We do. We do. Not Canton, so, you know, you can, you can insure your car out in Canton for a third of what you're charging in High Park, and it's because they're smashing into each other out in front. So, we've got a lot to work on. I'm glad you brought the conversation up, because I want to bring everybody in and just hammer everybody, but I don't, I worry about the citizens of Boston. I don't care about the citizens of Dedham and Westwood and Canton. I'm not, I'm not seeking further office. So, I don't care about them, I just care about the people who are here. And we should whack people who want to come in here, or Ubers and Lifts. That's, there you go. Sorry. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and look forward to having the hearing, and I agree with the previous three speakers. One of the main concerns I have with this ordinance is its, its potential to exacerbate the handicap parking and fraud abuse that takes place in our city every single day. The calls I heard from yesterday in anger of the article they read in the paper were mostly from East Boston, Charlestown, South Boston, South End, kind of densely populated, arguably overdevelopment, going through transition right now, and doing all the best they can to be able to keep their sort of vehicle on the road indoor, if they have multiple vehicles. So, that's one of the concerns. We saw it in the downtown, when parking garage fees went up, indoor, when garages came down and were redeveloped, the parking fraud, handicap parking fraud and abuse rose, and that was because folks from suburban communities just go to the doctor, fill out the form, get the note, get the application, and then they get a placard. They come in from all parts, north and south, park in the downtown, take a very precious parking space off of the streets, parked there all day, don't have to pay the meter, they can be there for eight, 10, 12, 16 hours, throw the nose up at us, we don't get the revenue. We lose out on millions of dollars every year, no one does anything about it, and that's the circling of the block. That's what causes people, because when you have someone taking up a space, and that meter's not turning over, because they have the placard, and again, this isn't for folks that are legit, this is for everyone that's just looking for a downtown parking spot, they don't want to pay the garage fees. My concern is that's now going to now play out into the neighborhoods, because people aren't going to want to be nickelled and dimed. They're not going to want to pay 25 for the first car, 50. My car, my house alone, that'd be $3.75, okay? Five cars, I get, that's how my program runs. One's going this way, one's going that way, someone's got school, someone's got after-school, hockey, soccer, it's a disaster. I mean, you're trying to keep up pace with my house. Good luck to you. But that alone is just going to prevent, it's just going to cause people to say, you know, I'm not going to do that. And then they will go to the doctor, they will get the note, they will fill out the application, then all of our neighborhoods will be, will have handicap parking places all over them. That's what's going to happen. That's, those are the facts of what potentially could happen here. So, Council Edwards, I think, you know, had suggested it best, like, talk about sort of a wider, wider spectrum. MBTA needs a seat at the table. They don't, we don't need, it's 2019, we do not need a bus stop on every single street corner, and they don't need to be a football field in length. They don't. We could talk about bumpouts, we could talk about maybe every other street or every third street. That right there will free up hundreds, hundreds of parking spaces in every single neighborhood. So, instead of us getting in a big fight and circling the block over parking spaces, let's bring the MBTA in. Council Edwards also referenced angle parking. So, maybe it is a neighborhood-by-neighborhood assessment. Maybe we bring all the district city councilors in with the Transportation Department, and the mayor's office, with community groups, and figure out what best parking plan works for that respective community. And as an at-large council, I'm happy to lend assistance, because we have a tremendous amount of experience dealing with it, not only in my own neighborhood, but dealing with it across the city for years. And so, the T cannot be left out. And then also those partnerships, where we have, say, a Boston Public School, I know it works up at Southie High, at night, they allow residents to park there. So, look at some of our, our own assets, our municipal buildings, and allow for parking overnight. That will help alleviate. Or reach out to some commercial businesses and partnerships that have big parking lots that allow for parking overnight. Our municipal lots allow for overnight parking. Maybe take some of the lots and convert them to municipal garages. There are a lot of different creative solutions that we could do to alleviate the parking crunch. I think that would serve a huge purpose, as opposed to, again, feeing and fining people into submission. People are going to argue their excise tax pays that, their insurance. Council McCarthy referenced that. If there's an accident on I-93 North or South, or on I-90 East or West, because it's on the expressway, it, we get the credit for it. And so, try getting your insurance, or our insurance, it's, it's everything. So, now's the time to have the conversation, but I do not think the answer is, and my, my hesitation is that all it will do is exacerbate the handicap parking fraud abuse, which currently exists in the city. No one's doing anything about it, and it costs us millions every single year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. I just want to add, just given my, put my district counsel lens on, and first of all, thank you, Council Wu, for bringing it forward. I agree with much of what my colleagues have said, including Council Edwards. I look forward to sort of the analysis piece, gathering that data, to truly get a sense of what the problem is, how many parking spaces do we have, how does it affect each neighborhood, representing largely Dorchester and Matapan. We are in the, Matapan in particular is in a place where there's a transit desert, it's difficult to get to the T, so people really do need their vehicles, I wouldn't want to penalize them. We also have residents who are now looking for more resident permit parking, because people from out of town are parking their Ashmont T Station or other stops along the red line, and our folks can't park in their own neighborhoods, either during the day or at night. So, what does it mean to bring that into the conversation without penalizing those residents? And District 4, largely a district, you know, still concentrated, much in poverty, there are different pockets that are concentrated in poverty, probably one of the poorest in the City of Boston. I have real concerns about adding additional cost to those residents. And then insurance. If you live in Matapan, like I do, 02126, that zip code, the insurance rates are enormous. And so, some of the response that I've gotten from some residents in response to the proposal are, I can't afford to pay anything else. And we're already thinking, I mean, people are already thinking about leaving the neighborhood, And we're already thinking, I mean, people are already thinking about leaving the neighborhood, really good employees, public employees, folks who are dedicated to that community because the insurance rates keep going up and they're so high. So definitely want to apply sort of an equity lens to this conversation and expand it, like many colleagues have said, to be broader. What is the purpose? Is it revenue? And if it's revenue, I'm not going to buy that piece, because I'm always talking about the inefficiencies in our budget already. I think there are places we could pull revenue and just have to adjust our values. If it is about limiting cars and opening up parking spaces and dealing with traffic and congestion, I think there's a long list of things we could be doing. And I think, you know, Uber and Lyft absolutely have to be at the table and on the agenda. But I think each district has a different, will likely have a different response to this idea. And so I look forward to absolutely joining the conversation, being a part of this. But definitely wanted to put that lens, definitely want to put my district council lens on for a minute. I will add, one of the pieces that I struggle with is the charging of visitor to come. I don't know how that would work logistically. You know, growing up in the South End, we had resident permit parking. Yes, visitors struggled to find a place to park, they'd come visit you and get ticketed, there was, you know, limited spaces for them. So maybe we really need to be talking about municipal parking lots, people have been talking about that for some time. Where do we build those? Maybe we need to talk about that a little bit more. But I've also heard some concerns about charging for visitors and how they'll actually work. So looking forward to joining the conversation and expanding it to include many other pieces of it.
Thank you, Council Wu.
Thank you, Madam President, for that question. I actually forgot to mention the visitor parking piece earlier, so just to clarify, the visitor parking permit wouldn't mean now charging for people to come in where they weren't being charged to begin with. It would model what every other city around us, Cambridge, Somerville, Brookline, is already doing, where they have a charge for resident parking of a certain amount per year, and then they have a separate visitor's parking pass, where if you have a, you know, your daughter's coming to visit you overnight, or friends from out of town, you can, in a lot of places, go online and, you know, ideally enter the license plate or whatever, pay for it that way, and then they can park in a resident parking spot. So that's how they handle it, when it's a separate visitor parking pass, but it folds into the resident parking program. Much of the outerlying neighborhoods wouldn't be affected by this, actually. This would cover about 40% of registered vehicles in the city of Boston. Matapan has, I think the last count was nine, nine cars with registered resident parking permits, and that's of the last year. Matapan has not had any resident parking every year before that. I know it is growing as residents are looking to, you know, try to protect themselves against this onslaught of cars coming in, but it's important to emphasize that it would not affect most of the outerlying neighborhoods, anyway.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I think we see that now, but as District 4 continues to expand and we continue to get more requests for those neighborhoods in terms of applications for resident permit parking, my fear is that those numbers will grow. They're definitely growing in the southern part of Dorchester, as more and more people are wanting to hop on our red line or get on our trolley in Matapan to head downtown. So while it may be low now, I see that changing drastically, and so want us to be mindful of it. And in terms of Cambridge, I absolutely agree with you. Momsides from Cambridge, you could get a visiting permit parking pass, you put it in your car, and usually your household was limited to one or two. The question is whether or not we should attach a fee or a fine. And folks, I'm concerned about that piece of the proposal as well. So thank you very much for bringing forth the conversation.
Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? At this time, docket 0681 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0682, Councilors O'Malley and Asabi George offer the following resolution in support of the Education Promise Act.
Thank you, Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm delighted to again partner with my dear colleague and friend, the at-large council from Dorchester and chair of the Council's Education Committee. Several, I guess it was about two months ago now, we testified in support of the Education Promise Act at the State House. It was a marathon session, I know many of you were there as well, it went on for probably 10 or 12 hours. So very briefly, whereas the state legislature continues to deliberate this really, really important funding mechanism for public education throughout the Commonwealth, we are putting a resolution forward today, and we'll be asking for suspension of the rules and adoption of the resolution. It is in support of Senate Bill 238 and House Bill 586, which is also known as the Education Promise Act. This bill was first introduced to the Massachusetts State Senate by State Senator Sonia Chang-Diaz of Jamaica Plain. The Education Promise Act would, over a period of time, implement the core recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, which was established in 2015 by the Massachusetts State Legislature in order to examine how the foundation's funding standard was calculated in Chapter 70 of school finance law. The Chapter 70 formula essentially calculates that a foundation budget for each school district, based on student demographics, enrollment, and local wage levels, to determine the minimum funding needed to provide a sufficient education to each student. The commission identified employee health insurance, special education funding, and the achievement gap for low-income and English-language learners to be the three areas where the 1993 Massachusetts Education Reform Act has fallen very short. 1993 bill was signed into law as an initiative intended to establish equity across all public schools. While it did manage to improve the achievement gap that existed at that time initially, there still exists a wide disparity in adequate funding between the wealthier and low-income communities. Consequently, cities like Worcester and Brockton have been vocal about filing new lawsuits to Chapter 70 formula in the wake of the increased class size and teacher layoffs. It is crucial that we, as the legislative body for the city of Boston, stand with our state legislature in support of an act that realistically accounts for the funds that are urgently needed for public schools across the Commonwealth. These efforts would increase the base rate of funding the districts get for low-income and English-language learners, increase funding for school employee healthcare costs, and boost education spending by more than $1 billion per year. The Education Promise Act is, as it suggests, a promise to the students and educators across the Commonwealth, who are assured through our Constitution and the 1993 reform act that public schools should be able and ought to be able to provide for every child a quality education under the guiding principles of adequacy and fairness. This would obviously be enormously helpful to our 57,000 students in the BPS, but equally important, it would be transformative for cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth, particularly gateway cities that are really, really struggling. So again, thank you to my dear colleague and friend for her partnership, and we'll be asking for suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution today.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Council Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Council O'Malley for his partnership and leadership in this work, and for his company when we trucked up to the State House and waited for what seemed almost a lifetime to testify in support of this bill. The Promise Act bill, as Council O'Malley, or my colleague from West Roxbury, has so eloquently shared, is certainly important. What I want to additionally share with you is in Boston, and one of the challenges that we face here in Boston is the concern that I've shared, that's been expressed to me, about Boston getting too excited about this bill, because it creates a problem for those across the Commonwealth that are advocating for passage of the Promise Act bill. Because there is a feeling up at the State House that Boston gets enough, and that we are fine, that we don't need additional resources, when all of us here, especially in the midst of this budget process, know that that is not the case. That when I think about our 4,200 students in the Boston Public Schools that are experiencing homelessness, a number that is documented at 4,200, but we think is much closer to 5,000, we know that we do not have enough resources to support those students and their needs. When the number of students receiving special ed services is in the tens of thousands, we know that we need additional services to support our students. What we have is not enough, what we do is not enough. When I think about the thousands of students, the tons of thousands of students in our district who have experienced trauma, who do not have access to full-time nurses, who do not have access to behavioral health and mental health specialists in their schools, we know that we do not have enough in the city of Boston. And this problem, these challenges, replicate themselves across the Commonwealth in so many of the school districts in this great state. But here in Boston, our responsibility is to standing up for and making sure that we have not just appropriate funding, but the funding our kids need, the funding our kids deserve to get the services that they need. We certainly do our part here on the Boston City Council, making sure that the budget reflects those needs, that we're putting pressure not just on each other through this work, but on our Boston School Committee, on our mayor, to make sure the schools are getting the resources they need to do the work. But as we work in partnership with the School Committee and with the mayor, the state needs to be in partnership with us, as we take care of some of the kids that are facing the greatest trauma, have the greatest need. So I look forward and hope that all of you will support this resolution, as been presented by my District 6 colleague from West Roxbury and myself. I hope that you will all support this effort, and I look forward to not just the passage here today and support, but fingers crossed, hopeful, hopeful support for what's happening at the State House, but we've all been engaged in that process as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Asabi George. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And Madam President, I'd like to respectfully ask that my name be added. I want to thank Council O'Malley, Council Asabi George for their leadership on this issue, the opportunity as well to join colleagues at the State House recently in support of Senator Sonia Chang-Diaz in the committee that is really fighting for the most vulnerable students here in Boston, but also across our state. I also sent a letter a while back in support of the Education Promise Act. But as Council Asabi George noted, this proposed legislation would really help the most vulnerable students across our state, especially our special needs, special education students, ELL students, and students with disabilities. So I think it's an important piece that would really help our students, and I'm also in support of this act as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Madam Clerk, if you could add Council Flynn's name? Council Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and also want to just give a shout out to my colleagues for offering this resolution. As someone who has been an education advocate, so very important that we do all we can to change the funding formula, to make sure that we are getting the resources that we need for our children here in Boston Public Schools, particularly if we are to be successful in eliminating opportunity and achievement gaps. This is critical to that, and so happy to add my name and offer my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Janey. Madam Clerk, if you could add Council Janey's name? Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could also add, Council Siomo, Council Edwards, Council McCarthy, Council Wu, Council Zachem, as well as the chair, and Council Baker. At this time, Councilors O'Malley and Asabi George seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0682. Council Flaherty, would you like to add your name? Madam Clerk, if you could add, Council Flaherty. They seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0682. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0682 has been adopted.
Docket number 0683, Councilors O'Malley and Flynn offer the following resolution in support of the Stop &amp; Shop United Food and Commercial Workers, UFCW.
Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I've never been more delighted to withdraw this resolution from the agenda, but before I do, I'd like to just thank my dear colleague and friend from District 2 for his partnership. I know many of you joined us at our different Stop &amp; Shop locations during an 11-day strike. I met, spent some time with some friends and neighbors and constituents who were at the Jamaica Plain Stop &amp; Shop next to Mildred Haley Housing Development. These are wonderful people who just wanted a fair wage. They were at a stalemate, they were at an impasse with the International Corporation that has made billions off their hard work and was, at that point, refusing to negotiate in good faith. Luckily, the strike is over, it only lasted 11 days. Unsurprisingly, I think, once again, this body was ready to go on the record in support of our working men and women, but we are delighted to withdraw this, but I do want to invite my colleague to speak on this, and anyone else that would like to, before it's withdrawn. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Want to say thank you to Council O'Malley for his leadership on this, and to thank the council, the councilors as well, for their leadership on so many issues that impact working men and women across our city. Want to say thank you to the mayor as well for being a strong supporter during the strike for the workers at Stop &amp; Shop. I have a Stop &amp; Shop in my neighborhood in South Boston, and, you know, people think of South Boston today, they think of a lot of the luxury buildings and a lot of the wealthy people that are living in Southie, and that is probably accurate. But we also have a lot of people that work in Stop &amp; Shop, that live in South Boston, that make the minimum wage or make just above the minimum wage, and a lot of them are women, a lot of them are elderly, low-wage workers, and they're really struggling. And those are the people that, myself and Council Flaherty, but those are the people that we really represent, making sure that our low-wage workers, our residents of South Boston, and all the neighborhoods really across the city, that are struggling to pay bills, to send their kids to school, but they deserve a good wage, they deserve healthcare that shouldn't be increased, and a pension plan that allows them to retire with dignity. And I want to say thank you to my colleagues for supporting the Stop &amp; Shop workers UFCW New England. But also, I want to say thank you to my colleagues for supporting organized labor and workers across our city on so many different strikes. And we think these resolutions may not have an impact, but they really do. Our city council is there for the hotel restaurant workers, United 26, made up of, many of them are immigrants, many of them women, low-wage workers, some of them are low-wage workers, but also we supported our steelworkers during the lockout, not even a strike, but of the lockout of National Grid, who made billions of dollars, this company, that owned Stop &amp; Shop. They had a huge tax break from the United States of $217 million, and they had $2 billion in profit. It's a European-owned company. But also, we stood there for our nurses, Mass Nurses Association, they didn't win that issue at the recent election, but they wanted safe patient limits, which is critical. We also have been there for SEIU on various strikes, as well as standing up for our residents that use the MBTA. They wanted some privatization of various services, I believe they were represented by the Machinist Union. So the city council has always been there, and the mayor as well, has always been there for our workers, and our low-wage workers especially. So I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for your great work on issues that impact working men and women across our city. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Council O'Malley as well.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Council Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. And just really quickly, I know the resolution's being withdrawn, but if it were still here and if the strike was still going on, certainly proud and happy to support this resolution, as Council Flynn has already indicated, and as I said at our last meeting, when I introduced the resolution to support workers who want to organize, who are at Northeastern, the non-tenured faculty, how many times this body has really stood up for and stood with workers in our community. And so I certainly support the resolution, even though it's being withdrawn, want to always stand in solidarity with our workers, but really just use this opportunity to highlight the fact that Rosie is here with me today. Carrie, I hope you're getting her. And she was on the picket line with me a couple of weeks ago with the workers, and got some great shots of Rosie standing with workers at the tender age of four, doing the right thing for people in our community, our neighbors, our workers. So just wanted to kind of highlight, since she's at the meeting here, if you're wondering what the little sounds, where they're coming from, it's Rosie who was there on the picket line with me as we stood with the workers. So thank you to Council O'Malley and Council Flynn for offering this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Janey. And Rosie, you're welcome back, anytime, anytime. At this time, docket 0683 will be withdrawn. I'm informed by the clerk that there are zero late-file matters. Anyone looking to remove a matter from the green sheets? Moving right along. I am informed by the clerk that there are two late-file matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The chair moves at this time for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Any announcements? Council Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, let's see. I'm very excited to present today, we have a resolution, a consent agenda, sharing that tomorrow, April 25th, is the first-ever needle-take-back day in the city of Boston. As you all know, I filed a Sharps ordinance a year and a half ago to expand the number of collection sites for safe needle disposal. Throughout the process of developing that ordinance, and the work I continue to do around that ordinance that hasn't been refiled, I learned throughout that, that there are lots of reasons why someone may use Sharps legally. Maybe they need it for their pets, maybe they need it for home medical treatments, diabetes, chronic illnesses, et cetera. And while the mobile Sharps team, through their work and their outreach work through our parks and through our neighborhoods, through the kiosks, through the Pats program and the needle-take-back program, they've collected upwards of and the needle take-back program, they've collected upwards of almost 400,000 needles. The growing volume of used Sharps creates an urgent need to increase locations for safe and appropriate needle disposal, especially when we think about the recent incidence of children being pricked in needles in our playgrounds, as well as the need to not dispose of needles in household trash. It's important to note that although we have 10 permanent locations that offer safe needle disposal across our city, Boston lacks sufficient collection sites to meet the volume of disposal needs for our Sharps. To prevent improper disposal in public, but to also prevent improper disposal in our household trash, we need to grow this number. Tomorrow, during this first-ever citywide needle take-back day, I'm grateful to be partnering with the Mass League of Community Health Centers, and to share with you that across our city, we have almost 20 additional locations, and those are all in our community-based health centers, that will be collecting needles from the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. On each of your desks, we've broken up by district the locations that we'll be collecting. So I hope you'll go in, take a picture. It's a great photo op, but it's also a great opportunity to thank some of the volunteers and the employees at those community health centers that are helping. We have volunteers from BU School of Public Health Activist Lab. We also have been supported in this effort by the mayor's Office of Recovery Services, as well as the Boston Public Health Commission, the Grayken Center for Addiction, Boston Medical Center, which we, a few weeks ago, all of us met through councillor Baker, have been a huge partner in this initiative, as well as Gillette and Rise Mass, who have funded the tools, the things that we needed for tomorrow, so the proper buckets, some proper training, a little bit of grant money for the health centers for their participation, but also some of the awareness in the promotional materials that we've used. I do want to note, I've got my flyer here that's been distributed to all of our health centers. This was printed by the students at Madison Park and the graphics, the graphics department. They do very low-cost printing, so if you need anything for any events that are coming up, please utilize the students. They do a fantastic job. Just want to thank everyone who's made tomorrow possible. I'm really excited about it. Tomorrow's needle take-back day is not to be confused with Saturday's drug take-back day. There are two great things happening this week, needle take-back day tomorrow. So if you've got them stored at home, you know, many of our residents have them in coffee cans and detergent bottles at home, throwing them into household waste, please don't do that. Please take advantage of Thursday, April 25th, needle take-back day, which we hope will not just be a one-time event, that we'll be able to replicate this many times across our city, and eventually we'll have a permanent plan in place for needle take-back across our city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Asabi George. Councillor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, madam president. It is with a heavy heart that I share with you today that we have lost a treasure in the Roxbury community, known by many, and possibly many of you. This person in Roxbury, this constituent, was very active in many political campaigns throughout the city of Boston for a number of years, very active in his local ward, which is my ward, Ward 12, is also a family member, my cousin. My father's first cousin, Dan Janey, passed away this morning. And so I ask that you keep our family in prayer. I will certainly convey whenever we have the information, so he just died this morning, when we have the funeral arrangements, we'll certainly communicate that to all of you so that you can support. And if you could just include his name in closing, as we close out today's meeting, I didn't get word soon enough to get it to you in advance, but please keep the Janey family in your prayer for Dan Janey, and particularly his children, Ben, my cousin Sydney, and Ben. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Janey. At this time, I ask that all guests, colleagues, and staff please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For councillor Wu, Bernard Bragg. For councillor Siomo, Alexander Rosen. Mary Tempesta and Bob Ogwen Jr. For councillor O'Malley, Charles Mahoney, his uncle. For councillor Zachem, Valerie Kaufman, Marshall Sloan. For councillor Edwards, Maria DeAndre Bonetti. For councillor Baker, Mary Louise O'Leary. For councillor Asabi George, Richard Rollock and Marisha Hoppen. For councillor Janey, Brent Henry, Rowan Lowry, Rick Baxter, as well as Dan Janey. For councillors Flynn, Flaherty, Baker, and Asabi George, Jack Dever, a U.S. Army veteran and retired BPS teacher from the John D. O'Brien. For councillor Siomo, Flaherty, and O'Malley, Teresa Donovan. For councillor Siomo and councillor O'Malley, David Casey. And for councillor Flaherty and councillor Siomo, Bartholomew Bart McCauley. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, May 1st, at 12:00 noon on the fifth floor. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.[1701.88][1701.88]